Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time, please. Turn all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate. And at this time, me, Mr. Morse, will you lead us in prayer and pledge service?
Dear Lord, thank you for this day and the blessings we're receiving from it. Lord, as we go about the business of City of Ballenger, just give us the wisdom and the insight to make decisions that'll be good for each and every person who resides in this city. Lord, we just ask that you forgive us where we fail you each and every day. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, motion to accept the minutes with corrections, please. Second?
I'm also referred to as Dixie Kiss. What a mean name. And I am part of it.
And on the issue, the park hours should be noted as seasonal, and we voted on that. I don't see who wishes to say. I don't remember who wants to say.
You know, page three.
Page three. And page seven?
She's writing two footprints.
Okay.
On page three, bottom of page, just above here, the city has been created by a report. Just a typo there, and it's two. See, that'll be long, and they got teed up, so geez. Just type it.
Okay. More than that, what do you get?
Right.
Fewer than that.
Everybody looks right.
All right, motion to accept the minutes with corrections, please.
Still move.
Second?
Please.
All papers say aye. Thank you, thank you. All right, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. For example, meetings act, the city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. All presentations are subject to a five-minute time limit. But if there's anyone in the audience tonight that does need to speak, I'll get you to say, Ms. Ross. And if you're not on the agenda, this is the time you need to speak. Other than that, it's only open for discussion for the council during the rest of the agenda items. Nobody else but Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross is going to explain or speak about the disc golf. Did I get it correct?
Yes.
And he wanted to speak during agenda item four because he didn't really want to hang out through the rest of the meeting until we get down into the other part. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ross, go ahead, please, sir.
I'm here to relay information about the purchase of the disc golf baskets. I believe last meeting, we talked about nine new baskets at a cost of $3,200. Since then, used baskets have become available from Contra Valley Disc Golf Association. We can buy 18 used baskets for $3,300. So we can get 18 baskets for almost the same price as nine new baskets. So that would be a nice option for us to get disc golf started here in, at, uh, here in Ballenger. Uh, we could also buy nine baskets for $1,700. We could get the city to choose or not buy the 18. I've heard you and Paul's course down at the park, and I'm on board with it. I like the course a lot.
Okay.
So that's all I have for now.
So you'd like, questions?
Utilizing the extra nine, you could go on up, or what's your suggestion on that?
Well, I talked to Sam about putting the second nine along this strip of land running along railroad and Park Avenue, but he said that that land does not belong to the city.
It's not belong to the city, but I didn't say we couldn't totally do it. It is Texas. I didn't know how everybody else felt about that as far as being able to do something like that. We did maintain it, so it's like...
What's on in or...
Just along the railroad track.
Oh.
Do the second course, nine holes along there. I think it would be ideal.
Actually, it would be good because you take a lot of exposure at that point in time. And, uh... Now, we've talked about utilizing elsewhere in the city, but you could start with nine here. I don't think that you could squeeze 18 in to our part, just as it is. You'd have to find other places for it around the park. I have to kind of stop right now. But that would be an excellent idea.
And if you were to hold turns here, there's nine holes there, nine holes here. You'd get a lot more people on 18 holes.
Right. Or have a bigger draw?
Yeah.
So this is that strip of land running down through here, though?
Up the side of the railroad track.
Side of the track all the way down.
Well, from, from the Cuthbert House all the way down.
I didn't know if we could go all the way down, or I don't think whose land that was beyond...
There's a fence right there, and it belongs to somebody else besides the City of Ballenger. But everything else, either railroad, or City of Ballenger, Texas, you know, technically, I think it all belongs to Texas. The railroad uses it, we use it, we maintain it, so, and that's the big thing. And you'd have to cross the highway, but...
Or we could start it here, on Broadway, in this corner, and head up. And then play back, I was hoping.
Right. Well, I mean, there's, there's lots of different options. I'm all for getting 18 baskets, uh, because it's the same process as what we were gonna get the nine for. And I talked to Mr. Harris, and he was the gentleman here before, the stenological standard times. He's supposed to go look at those baskets tomorrow. Apparently, these were on a private ranch in Oklahoma, and so it's probably used very little. And, uh, so we're thinking they're in great shape to be used, and so...
Disc golf baskets are typically made of heavy galvanized steel, so they don't wear out.
And they don't, they don't rust very often.
I've never seen rust on one.
Right.
You know, the only thing is that people abuse them.
Right.
Try to put fires in them, I think.
But the only thing I've seen is where they, you know, tear the chains off and stuff like that.
So the, um, I was thinking that the cost for the baskets, or for the whole course, was gonna be around $3,000 total?
Yes, uh, just gonna be $3,200.
$3,200? Um, so we were planning on buying used, were we planning on buying used baskets?
Well, no, we were gonna order brand new.
But we didn't know that they were $3,200. Well, that, that didn't factor in the contrary, the little stuff.
No, and neither does this. I mean, uh, what it is, we were gonna buy nine brand new baskets and all the accessories that go with it, and what's gonna cost us $3,200.
Oh, okay.
Now, we're gonna buy 18 at $3,300 basically. So for $100 more, $140, you get an additional mine, which we could increase our, our, uh, usage, I guess.
Exposure usage?
Yeah, exposure.
Installation.
Do what?
Insulation, installation. Call.
Well, uh, what do you say, the employees? We're gonna need concrete, so maybe a pallet of concrete. So you're looking at probably less than $500. I mean, really? I mean, we got all the equipment to make a hole, and it's not concrete.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you very much.
You can run now.
So, Blaine, is there a timeframe of this gonna be available?
I do not know that. I would not wait, though.
No, that's what I'm... That's what I'm saying. We expect some tomorrow.
Right, yeah, after, after, uh, all the specs, I'll just learn more about it.
Moving on. City council may consider a ceremonial square again of new police officer Anthony Hurst. But if you already pass, and you already are in uniform, why do you have to consider?
I'm just here. I was supposed to be here.
Does, does council have any non-conservation in that?
No.
I don't think so. All right, who's doing the square again?
I guess I'll be me.
Okey-dokey.
I'm gonna get some cameras.
I am Anthony Hurst. I am Anthony Hurst, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties and responsibilities that I will faithfully execute the duties and responsibilities of a police officer of the state of Texas. Peace officer of the state of Texas. And I will do my best to my ability, and I'll do my best to my ability to preserve, protect, and defend, to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the United States. And of the state of Texas, oh, we got. And the state of Texas, oh, we got.
Did you get the pictures?
Yeah.
She got video. I know you did video, but did you get the pictures in back?
I'm sending them right now.
Okay. I just make it sure. I figured you had some over there.
I got a few on what you're doing. I wasn't prepared to dip part of the day.
Without a photograph.
I need some of some of the paper.
Probably already taken two.
Probably.
All right, city council may consider discussing authorized approval of contract with Nextlink for internet, Wi-Fi, and phone service. You should have the contract in your packet. Mr. Chester, have you reviewed?
Yes, I have. Basically, what this will do is, is they will provide us internet service to, um, according to paragraph two, for free of charge. Hopefully, one of the things that Tommy and I talked about is making sure that they could serve our locations, and so we added there you'll see that they represented our locations, desire to be served, are within range of their intended facilities. And basically, if something happens where it doesn't work, we're not satisfied, and we can terminate the cause that came to that. Basically, otherwise, we have a five-year, I had, I usually provide where we can get out of these things after a year. They didn't like that. So now, basically, unless they breach, we're stuck with them. So let's speak for five years. Hopefully, it'll be a good relationship. After five years, we can terminate at will. So that's the gist of it. You know, they'll pay, um, any taxes if they're assessed on their antennas and things that are put on our facilities, so, um, so it should be okay. I think as long as we're okay for five years. Like I said, I think the main thing is, one of my clients did a similar thing, but the services weren't very good, and, uh, and so, you know, I, I know they were frustrating.
You know what's happening with?
So, you know, what's good, what's next for me? But the only hell of a worry is what's, what's Texas providers, and so they can provide quality services to real entities and some families and people. So I hope this is, a benefit does.
Well, one of the benefits that was in the contract is the 13 dozen of your savings on our phone bill and our internet. So that's, that's one thing that...
It works, and that's...
It'd be really good if we put this in place, we'd write off $13,000, get that back.
That's great.
So that was, that was my thing. That was why we were so happy to make this contract up. You guys talk me through them.
All right. Any other questions? Can you? All right, motion to accept the approval of contract with Nextlink for internet, Wi-Fi, and phone service.
Sorry, sir, sorry, sir. I just have one quick question, and I'm sure I know the answer behind it. I'll make sure, um, since a lot of our business obviously goes through either the internet or the phone, is the IP that was in use a secured one, or are you guys worried about that?
Right, we just talked about that when the meeting is over. Secure, that's a self-communication, so.
All right.
Just to, to be honest, I believe it's quicker than you are now.
Okay.
All right. Motion?
Uh, motion?
How do you get the motion? And the second approval? You have a second?
I'll say it.
All papers say aye. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chris, I insist with it. All right, city council may consider discussing authorized approval of contract with Carnegie Library. And this should have been the one that we're giving to you right before the meeting to update the ones you had in effect. Is that correct?
I didn't make, I just took out some of the, if you will notice, the one in the packet, references, codes, and then...
Well, let me... Ten years ago, Carnegie Library and City of Ballenger signed a contract. It was basically for $5,000, that we would provide $5,000 to the Carnegie Library, and the Carnegie Library would remain at the public, or for public use. And it was basically, all the other verbiage was whole harmless agreements between the entities. It went up for renewal October, and, uh, so Carnegie contacted us, said they needed a new contract for, they were getting into some, uh, maybe grants or something like that.
Uh, no, the Texas state...
Yeah, you have to do this.
I mean, they sent their annual report in. They came back to them and said, "Your contract is expired, you need to do contract."
There you go.
And so that's it.
Okay, so we found that it expired, so we're just basically renewing.
I made the renewal effective today.
Right.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, because it was, it said October 1.
Yeah.
Do they need, does the library board need to review this or anything before we...
Right.
Because they don't meet till next Monday.
Well, they don't, the, the, the library said they didn't need the contract until 30th of July.
Yeah.
So, uh, we got time, uh, so they can review it. And, uh, we just needed to update some of the verbiage. Just want Pat to fit some words in there.
I didn't change much at all, except for take out all the old provisions, the other statutes that are... Tommy suggested we go ahead and change the $5,000 to $10,000, if that's what we do.
Right.
So, um, we approved the contract, that would be some $10,000. If we want to do it. And of course, we had a six-month termination, but we decided one year, we wanted money.
Right.
If we get ready to go into something, the budget here, we could terminate if we had to. Like, we'll say that the state requires them to have funded contracts from public entities to keep their nonprofit status up.
Yeah, they do, they have a contract with the county as well.
So you said you changed it to simple? No, I have...
Oh, sorry. Was I gonna say you're going on, I had still said pipe.
No, I was... We should change.
Oh, should change. Because in the budget, we gave them $10,000 a year.
This is what they had in place.
Ten years ago. And now, technically, also, we, we pay their electric bill, but, I mean, I don't know if that's something you want to add to the, uh, because, I mean, that, that may come and go as needed. And so, what do you think?
I think in the budget, in the budget itself, that the $29,000 was put for the library, the $10,000 plus left.
Okay.
Uh, that was $25,000 total.
But, well, then...
If I remember correctly...
Yeah. Oh, you remember?
I think it's 20. 20. It's 20, it's 25.
Yeah. So what we might do is look in, do we need to itemize that?
Uh, you know, I think for their purposes, they have to have the cash funding for their purposes of their state contracts.
Right.
We've got it, we've, obviously, I guess for my purposes, as long as we've got a president who gets a wish here, I'll, I'll stay for it.
Okay, so we're just...
Leave it to wait. It's 10 to 10.
Okay.
Which is what we give the cash on, so...
Okay. Okay. But other than that, I knew, I saw the verbiage in there, and I knew it had to be a bad...
Were you tableing this for today? Are you ready to look at it, or?
No. I'm gonna approve it. It's not effective until July 1st, so if they don't approve it, we can back them, we can always replay that one next weekend.
We just gotta approve it with the $5,000 to $10,000.
Not put it in my file.
All right, motion, motion to authorize the approval of the contract with Carnegie Library with the modification to $10,000 combined?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All papers say aye. All right. City council may consider discussing and authorizing fireworks zone at the lake park.
Uh, our 4th of July fireworks, which is actually on the 29th of June, uh, will be at the lake park. We've been discussing having an area behind the lake, uh, so if you go over the, the, uh, causeway, there's a little area that typically a lot of people go back there anyway to shoot off fireworks. If we had a designated area, like a safe zone, where you can do that, we've coordinated with the fire department to see what they thought about it. Uh, you know, where we might have, you know, a fire truck sitting back there, just, you know, because we think it might have a small grass fire. That way, we're ready. We have an identified zone, and hopefully, the police aren't running all over town trying to, you know, tell people not to shoot fireworks off on 13th Street and 7th and 6th, and, you know. So we're hoping this might mitigate some of that. What is the fire department then?
Who's up here?
I guess on the, on the volunteer side, there's just one of the liabilities for what else out there, some kid shoots another kid with a bottle rocket or something like that.
Right.
I mean, just legal standpoint, other than that, that's it.
Right.
Is there any zones or any place that you all would rather happen than not, or any place that's better than not?
Man, I don't know. We keep getting rain, it'll be all right. If we start getting really, really hot, dries out and get mad, so it's gotta be somewhere where you don't have a lot of grass and stuff.
Well, this is subject to, to change. If, if, you know, if we end up in a burn ban, then this might be something we should go through.
Yeah.
But at the moment, or like the school, uh, we're gonna have fireworks at the lake anyway.
But one of our normal objections, which is, uh, in terms of...
I believe the last fire out there was in that area, so...
We're gonna let it all down first?
If it's hot, it won't matter. The hot won't stay there very long. If we can get it cut really short, that would be good.
Yeah. And that is something we would look at.
So we cut it and burn it?
Yeah.
We get it off, we get it all burned, cut and burn it, and just burn it down when you have it wiped out.
I bet my side was thought some, some...
Yes, you have anything you did?
Well, I just had a couple questions. Were you expecting anything from the police department side, or were you into providing security, is there gonna be like a, technically, it's still the legal pocket of the lake, are we gonna get a variance, and how you wanna handle that tomorrow?
That's what this area would be, is a variance.
Like a permanent one, or just?
Well, for July 4th, for, for, when we have fireworks at the lake on 29th of June.
So on the 29th?
Yeah.
Like a 24-hour variance coming in?
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
Because, you know, I expect people will go get fireworks, and then, you know, if they're at the lake watching our fireworks display anyway, they may want to use their fireworks they purchased.
Right. But that's not the question I'm asking. Like, generally, from the 3rd of July through the end of August, people are still on the fire.
Right.
So I kind of know if there's gonna be just, you know, this two-hour thing, or it's gonna be...
Well, we were supposed to say just ask about 3rd and 4th.
3rd and 4th. So you're like, two days, basically.
Okay. I mean, so we, we know what we're supposed to not do. I mean, do you want them to want us to have a security out there?
I would say no. So, it would just, just the, if we, if we, uh, burn it beforehand, the likelihood that we catch a fire in that area, it won't be down.
Think of vehicles, people, just, like, in those areas.
Travel, people.
Oh, you also have people drinking coolers and their own alcohol, so that's a concern during this period.
That's all.
So, we're not gonna limit them on what they can bring out there. You can expect cases of alcohol. So if we're only here, and there's nothing out there, we're gonna have to rush out there, and it's a lot of time between there and there. So what's...
It's according to farms.
Yeah.
That's the most important.
We don't wanna waste that water. Well, I, I, I'll just let, I know this past legislative session, when we were down there, we had went and done our little thing, and a couple of days later, fireworks, people were getting a bill where they would sell 365 days a year, no regulation, you know, do what they want, that even near a burn ban, there was nothing, they were gonna take all the, the juice that the, the county judge has away from them, and it is, I don't know if we defeated that or not, but we, as the fire service, were looking at it, and if we did get it defeated, I hadn't seen anything yet on it, next year, or next by any of, the next by any of, there's probably no way that the fire service can stop that. So you're gonna, you're gonna have pretty much thinking pop fireworks in your head in a year or so, and without any regulation. Now, I, I'm sure that they'll give cities some kind of, but, yeah, so, that's something you might wanna start thinking about, if it hasn't happened already.
One must not be good, was to start.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you can kind of get them headed that way, it would be excellent way. But I, I don't, I don't see a whole lot of that happening. Well, I don't think it passed. I mean, it's been passed. Oh, no, I don't, I'm going... I know we worked really hard to get it out. I want the legislative update on the 24th, so we're gonna go through everything that passed this month, next city, so I'll have some of this stuff like that, but I don't recall that being... Being passed yet?
What do you think about our, our risk area?
Get the light blade here tonight. So I think you do probably need to have some security, and I, I made it bleak, especially if alcohol, which I've never been to 4th of July, it's empty, didn't have alcohol. You got alcohol, you're gonna have unruly folks.
Well, well, okay, I guess we're talking about two different things here. If we open an area up so people can use their own bottle, okay, that's one thing. We're gonna have, uh, the, what's called the July 4th event, and, uh, we will have security for July 4th event.
Different than the June 4th. So you've got all the day, July 4th, so...
Well, yeah, okay, we're having our July 4th, not July 29th.
There's a change to Independence Day celebrations, stuff, and you feel...
Yeah, that would be good.
Good.
Hey, Cory, we might make a note of that. Anyway, and basically, what it boiled down to, when we started, the guy was already booked for July 4th, so, anyway, we moved it until the 29th. Anyway, so we're gonna have that... Anyway, so we're gonna have that independent celebration, and, uh, we will have security for that, but we're gonna have an area behind the lake where people can pop their own fireworks.
On the same night?
Yeah, well, and, and also, the fourth and the fifth, maybe, or third and fourth, something like that, and, which would be, it's.
Cause in the past, it's been banned, and they popped them in town, and.
Yeah, everyone.
So, that's kind of your mistake is only go.
Yeah.
So, we get what date, so we get the twenty-ninth and the third and the fourth, and we advertise those three days, this specific spot?
I have to pick up your trash.
That would just get a hold of you. Well, and, and where we plan to set the dumpster out there, so you can.
A little.
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
I'm sorry, for the third and the fourth, and there's gonna be no, no one out there, no city personnel to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing? Reason I'm asking is because the fire department won't be out there, they'll be out there Thursday, twenty-ninth, but not for the third and the fourth.
Well, I think we talked about having somebody out there the night of the third and the fourth.
Okay, cause alcohol will still be present, guarantee it.
Yeah.
There'll be fireworks, and definitely alcohol, so.
Why are you suggesting we not do it?
No, I'm, I'm saying be cognizant that when you set the rules, then you tell them that the only option.
Are you suggesting we have a police officer out there?
No, I'm saying that just be cognizant that we're gonna end up stretching our folks out there, it might be silly. Just because you're, you're saying don't pop it in the city, we know that they'll do it.
Yeah.
But, when they go out there, you give them an allowance, which is great, if they choose not to do it, I mean, it's a, it's a play, we don't know, because we've never.
Well, what would you suggest?
Just be cognizant that when you set up the rules, that you give them guidelines to the citizens, and say, these are the locations, we've opened it, we've heard about you, we know you're gonna wanna fire them out, take your family out there, have a great time, be safe, here's the trash bin, pick up your garbage, have a bucket of water, be careful about drinking, however you wanna set it for the third and the fourth. If not, you're gonna have personnel out there, and that's an excessive amount of people between here and there, it's just a big business. It was just Hillcrest if you want them, but, from here to the lake is, that's a stretch for us to get out there, and you mentioned the roads are horrible.
We have to go to Sandy Beach there, where our one has an open celebration like that, and I mean, it is drunk and free.
Uh-huh, it is.
I forget, the first year my parents were still alive, it was about ninety-eight or nine, I went out there, we're sitting on the tailgate, and you see people, watch them, you know, they, you know, they light their fireworks on there, wobble down, you know, you knew the ones that were drunk is because they couldn't stand still, you know? And of course, you see, of course, next thing you see, the bottle rocket could knock over, shh, right into a tent, caught it on fire, you know, I mean, I don't forget mom saying, this, this be kind of like water, it is, I mean, you know, fluid, I've never seen anything like it in my life, I mean, and so you mix alcohol with, ah, things flying through the air, it's kind of scary.
They do it here in the city already, um, you know, off Sixth and Tenth Street, or whatever, people out there and they'll do it, but, because it's outside the county, there's the, there's a road, so we may wanna get with the SO, and see if we can do a collective effort, just to be safe, because if we get on, then something happens, they're gonna come back on us and say, why weren't you out there? And that's a liability, that's just feedback, that's all. It's a great event, I love fireworks, but, I don't want a kid with an E R on his foot either.
I'm not rushing which way you wanna go on this.
It's, it's, y'all, I'm just giving you feedback.
We're giving us, I was actually saying is we need to be cognizant to make sure that we have somebody out there in order to run out spreading them things, because they can get worked in. So, at least we're able to schedule it between the M S O and fire department, as far as who's gonna be around, you know, even if you're just there, present, somebody out, that's better than nothing, you know, nobody.
You shouldn't assume that because you're having an event on the twenty-ninth, that they're not gonna celebrate on the third and the fourth.
Right, so they still will.
Well, that's what they're gonna do from the twenty-fourth. Do it on the last night.
Right.
Till the end of the month, when they run out.
But maybe if you set the rules that says, like, you know, just the same, from this day to this day, here are the parameters, and then you can after that, then you're in violation.
Right, give them guidelines, set the boundaries, and then go from.
If you put a little disclaimer on the flyer.
Oh, yeah, it's all where you're at. Bottle rocket, yeah, that's all where you're at, as far as, as far as on our end, the liability there, so she's just saying the same thing, you know? The liability, and then not being there, they may be over here, or something like that, to help. I was saying, we was seeing those nights, but, I was on the radio, these people are going from second to sixteenth, to fifteenth to third, to, they're just going back and forth all night long.
All the bridges.
What, what hours do you want them, or what they, you know, what they?
We could either do all week?
Yeah, I'd suggest probably all week.
But we are, so we, we think we wanna have a police officer out at the lake, at that designated area, dark to,
Sure.
What, ten or eleven?
Yeah, probably eleven.
Is that right?
So, there, there would be any popping fireworks by ten o'clock?
I think that'll be good.
Be real?
Not the end, I mean, I think eleven would be, isn't that what you, you're saying, eleven?
I, I don't, I don't have a specific one, ten or eleven, but just so like, at the bottom of our flyer, we can say things like, the hours that it is, the days it is, to bring a bucket of water with you.
I don't know, I understand that, I'm just trying to identify the days of the week you wanna do it, and what times?
Eleven's about the time we get paid out out there, since normally cleared off with dust on the road, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, really, it doesn't get dark till what, nine-thirty?
Well, I mean, eleven normally is pretty clear by the time we get out there.
Yeah.
So, twenty-nine is a Saturday night, maybe, what we did is, the twenty-ninth through the fourth. The fourth ends up on a Thursday.
Right.
And then after that, it shouldn't be popping fireworks.
Oh, you should, it should.
It's a five-day weekend though, that's Thursday, which is the actual fourth, and we got Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, so, it's gonna be a big, big weekend. They'll be wanting to do it on those days, we want to be fortunate to do that, by opening this. So, y'all, and you've got a, a launching place and a place for them to do that, I think it's fantastic, but.
My suggestion would be Saturday, Saturday.
Saturday and Saturday?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Anybody else?
Want to let them prop?
Saturday and Saturday?
Hopefully this stuff, PD, I don't, I mean, we're, we're gonna be doing stuff anyways, it doesn't really matter, so, uh, but, you know, maybe they can, you know, possibly import more in town or something like that, 'cause now you're given an opportunity for someone to go to there.
Exactly.
And if you're not gonna take your land to that, then you get excuses.
Can he put up there, I've seen where it was out there this, and no warnings will be given, say that not, if you pop it in town, no warnings will be given, you'll be in the second. You go out to that area, you're fine.
Cause that's what I was saying, no warnings, we go, we don't, we don't want land in the county, we don't.
Yeah.
If we can get some type of, or sign to put your, the fireworks stand, because they have, they can't forget to mention to people what they can't pop.
Well, that was before we had this, if we have a safe zone.
Right.
They can send them directly out there.
Right, if they, if they.
If they're. I'll make them, they'll promote for sales too, I mean, they've got a place to come to.
Right, that's, that's why I, I don't think they'll have a problem reminding people, because, you know, before, they'd never had anything. So, they, they wanna make sales, they don't really care where you pop them, that's not really their responsibility.
We can even make a supplier stand for the.
Well, no, I'm not gonna make signs like this.
Have a booth out there, out of the lake. Well, so they can have a same fire right there, hold them up, guide them that way, and then that.
One straight bottle rocket.
Maybe not even straight, I know people do that in the process.
I think it'll be a surprise.
Yeah, I like it.
If we give you designated area, there are no warnings in this one.
Okay.
And say to them, it's no warnings, if you pop them, say to them, if you get caught, you pay the price.
Yeah, I like, I think, cause I don't, I mean, since we have a safe zone now, if we do this, then.
We want to.
There won't be any excuse for no one to do it in the city.
But that was when we made a little swap, that was the fact that they had it a little years ago.
Right.
They remembered the old time when they used to do it out of the lake, and that was the reason why they're, they're very honest about it, but they, this is a perfect answer for that.
And, and honestly, see if it were me, I'd probably go the old lake, which we probably catch on fire in a heartbeat, 'cause it, nothing's been done with it, it's all grown up. But if you, if you put it, make this area have the new lake, then, you know, it, we shouldn't be able to.
Contain it.
Right, if anything were to happen, so, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, what do we think?
So, Saturday, Saturday, no warnings, change that to Independence Day celebrations, so no lessons, no warnings, it is.
Time?
Like to eleven o'clock?
Nine, should be eleven, or?
I wouldn't even put it.
Just up to eleven, but when are we gonna send PD out there?
Uh. I would say about nine-thirty.
Mine's already turned.
To eleven o'clock.
Do we want the two departments to get together and come up with something that they'd like to see, sticking on the flyer, as far as like the bucket of water, you know?
Well, if they're gonna be out there, they're gonna have order anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, of course, you have order in the park, it ain't no good if you get an order.
Yeah, and, and.
Go along with the four.
Yeah.
Like so?
Yeah, exactly.
Jump that there?
Yeah. Yeah, but we will just make sure to have some trash dumpsters out there, so they can dispose of their stuff.
Say, bring him up to here, that's those kind of need. Little off?
Yes, no? Alright, motion to authorize the setting fireworks zone at the lake park from the evening twenty-ninth through July fourth, two thousand nineteen.
I think we said.
Yeah.
The sixth, I apologize, change that to July sixth, I've forgotten, said, said the third. And the times would be from nine-thirty to eleven, correct?
Correct.
Alright, get that evening?
No warnings will be given in town?
No warnings in town.
And nine, but I, I think we could do the cutoff eleven, but if they wanna go out there at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we weren't gonna make a starting time.
You're correct, my, recent start time at nine-thirty, and just leave it open, and your cutoff time is eleven P M.
I like that motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Alright.
Consider approval of the building permits, I believe it was the seventh two, is that correct? And it's already, and Lisa, you're rocking on?
Yes. Uh, both of these have been reviewed, Steve went out to look at both of them, uh, I have no problems with any one. One is a, about a storage building, well, I think the other one's part of it.
What was the other part of that?
Both of them.
Storage, storage, building?
Storage, okay.
Yeah.
All storage. Alright, motion to accept building permits, ask for anything, second?
Correct.
All favor say aye.
Alright.
Alright.
On the building permit stuff, we were talking, these eight street folks at the storage building, come to ask.
Uh, we sent them a letter, uh, and, we'd be off topic a little bit, but it's in line.
Alright.
I heard anything else, but, oh, I got what Pat, we sent a demand letter, telling them that if they need to move it, or if we will move it, and their subject is fine, and, you know, uh, uh, citation, so, I mean.
Is it looking?
Right, right, we sent that out Friday, and, uh, we, I expect we'll hear something back tomorrow.
We'll hear something.
Probably not on the door.
Yeah, probably.
Alright, please.
Yep.
You wanna flip flop with the charter last, or you wanna do?
I didn't make any changes to the charter from what we did last time, I didn't know it was only a bit, I was shocked today, so, uh, but I didn't make any more changes on what y'all saw, that's why I sent you, was what I had.
It was from last time, yeah.
So, did anybody else have any changes that they, after thinking about it?
Did you actually delete the conflict of interest?
Hell, hell, what do you, won't be deleting that, I mean, that was something, y'all never did exactly.
No, there was, there was a lot of discussion, I was curious when we deleted that.
I'm thinking of leaving.
That's the question, how do you? Alright, City Council may consider discussing and authorizing, thank review of proposed charter changes and set date for public hearing. Okay, now you can go ahead.
Delete the last fourth of the. No officer employed, the city show, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, you mean, I feel like, what's that, what's in your package is, is the deletion of the entire, uh, existing one, and replace it with just a conflict of interest provision, that's what you.
That's what I remember, man.
And I'd make the change since the last time you saw.
Okay.
Uh, but it, what it does is, it deletes the entire current charter provision.
So, what will be presented, you, the lines through this, no officer employed, the city of Gollings, or show that's a financial interest, direct or indirect, and any contract with the city of Gollings, that will be eliminated, deleted.
Meaning no was, don't change it, what you're saying?
I like that, and, but that's just me, I mean, that's.
No, I agree with that, I knew already in there, some form of fashion.
The reason I was in there at the beginning.
But I believe that change, you know, running. Somebody said they wanted to see what the citizens said, and just have their public hearing, it, it doesn't matter, whatever you want, it's your charge.
What the alternative was to, uh, how was it to?
Go to the states?
Basically, what it says now is, it said, you know, you have to follow the state law, and if you don't disclose your conflict of interest, which will be percent to one fifty-one, and disclose it for one seventy-six, basically, then you get control.
So, there's something that covers under the state, or we're moving just our purposes?
Well, this is an absolute prohibition, uh, of having interest in a contract with the city, by the way it exists today. Under the new, I'd say, I'd say as the evolution of charters and the law has become, but remember, that provision, when it was, uh, there was no conflict of interest provisions in the state at all, it was all common law, which is pretty much what we adopted in nineteen sixty-three, was that provision, because that's how the statute's written, but in fact, counties are still that way, the statute still says that. Like, cities which have charters, and, and as the law change, uh, with more, and of course, they still continue, that state law is about disclosure of conflicts of interest to interests and contracts, and so, what, what I was, when I, you know, I asked me to look at these provisions and set up, when we talked about this committee, the interest was to look at an alternative provision, and that's what I got, which is basically, um, so it will give you the opportunity, if it ever arises, and again, I think it's, it's not a, uh, everyday occurrence, but if there was ever a situation where a council person had an interest in co, in property, or some good that you could acquire nowhere else, then they disclose it, um, you announce it in the council meeting, and then you vote on it.
That person recused it?
Yes, they wouldn't vote, but, i-if you have, we keep a list, that will never happen, because you can't, and I, that's, I, I think that's, there's, you know, obviously, I understand the provision, uh, of why it was there, and I would tell you, don't do business with yourself in almost every instance, because it just doesn't look good, but that doesn't mean you might not be pressed into it at some point, and that's when you would do it. So, that's, like I said, I told you last time, I understand if you don't want that change in, um, whatever, whatever's your preference.
Should we ever sort out the, the fire department stuff?
Not completely.
Do we need to set up a meeting, or arrange sometime?
Yeah, 'cause when I was looking at it, I think what Bob's getting into, you take, this, this is five thirty-one, we've had a meeting since then, so the discussion on what Bob's talking about in the fire department really hasn't had any changes to it.
No.
Uh, since before the last meeting, so, this is the same thing that y'all had in front of you then.
Well, the last meeting we were talking about, so, um, which was a first meeting, so, um, and so now, I guess the question is, you know, we need to make the changes that you, you suggested last time, are we okay with that? Which is essentially, um, the fire department. Which is essentially, um, the fire department is different than what I knew it to be. I always thought, I always thought the gentleman sitting there was a party.
Really?
Yeah. I always thought he was a party, and so.
So did I, for a long time.
And so, uh.
He goes and sits there.
Anyway, I make those changes, what other provision, what other provision we might change, and I just, because I just haven't been dealing with this right now in Brownwood, is, um, is having a provision in there dealing with voluntary, um, referents, and here's where it comes into play, if, for example, we're talking about building a project that's gonna be pretty expensive, and we would like to present it to the voters for non-binding, basically, let them say whether we wanna do it or not, and, uh, and if your charter doesn't provide for that type of non-binding referendum, uh, you, you have a harder time getting an election on it, and so, this big division says, council, it's some initiative, may call an election on a G like that, so for example, we're talking about a, you know, project or something that you don't.
For instance, if I wanted to build a yacht.
Yeah.
Um, or said we got plugged with the boundary, like.
Yeah, I mean, you know, or, you know, y'all wanna build a vision center, or, you name it, whatever it is, that was something that y'all didn't know how the public felt about it, and, uh, that's how you find out, you go to election, now, that's obviously not cheap, go to elections, but, uh, again, it's the alternative, sometimes you say have your public hearings and town hall meetings and things like that, uh, but if you, you know, wanted to get a, basically, a, an opinion from the voters, you could put it on there, but if we don't have that non-binding option, you can't do it, so I suggest we add that, I think it's a, just, they never do it in your lifetime, but, again, we've never done it in Brownwood, but, you know, we kinda would like to do it, and we're kinda facing a, a charter that doesn't allow it, so, um, so anyway, it's something I thought might be good for us to add, 'cause like I said, uh.
What adds versatility to you?
Well, it does, like I said, it's, Ablyn did one, year two, though, and, uh, so few cities do it, and, uh, but again, I thought maybe it's something that I will have, what I thought, and what, what is our schedule? We have to have this thing, we have to adopt the ordinance on August the nineteenth, call the election. So that would be our second meeting in August. I don't know if I wanna wait for the last meeting to do it, just in case something happens, so.
You would.
Call the election, and you might be doing it before the nineteenth, but that's our drop dead deadline.
Well, the plan was meet last meeting, meet this week, have a hearing, uh, you know, a public hearing. And that would, that would kind of complete our, our mission here.
And I think we're good on just about everything, it was just changing that.
If you're surprised, I'm in line with what they expect.
We've got committees going down today, so.
Yeah, 'cause y'all are also looking at your charter, your bylaws.
You think, you think y'all, we're used to say y'all a long time.
Yeah, you said yours was nineteen oh five?
Nineteen oh five. But we have bylaws that are much more up to date.
Recent.
Yeah, and that's what I told Pat, I'm getting as soon as we, as, as our committee gets done with it, we'll, we'll get those over to you.
Is that gonna be before?
That shouldn't really affect y'all, I think one more.
It doesn't, our, basically, it seems like it's just semantics.
It'll, it'll help them run an agreement.
It's word of the mouth.
Right. So, we've got July first or fifteenth, and we'll do the public hearing on those, so we'll refer to that. As a reader, let's see first.
Uh, we can do the first.
This is for town hall, or?
Uh, just a hearing on the charter. So we basically do it right before the, the city council.
But no one showed up.
Yeah, yeah.
Last time they won't, no one showed up on, on some.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was the grant, uh, for the streets, but.
Just maybe they'll do it.
So we're, we're just gonna sit down and go over through them again and go, okay, we're for sure on this one, we want this one, we don't want this one, but on this one, so we want to present to the public, is that what?
Well, I think what I'll do is take what you got there and put a little just reason, uh, language, um, and then basically, we'll have, for half the second half, um, look at them while we're doing it, or, you know, we post it on our webpage, um, and that way, when, when they show up on the other day, we have a chance to go read them, and maybe we could add a hard copy here if you want to. Anyway, basically, um, discuss it then.
Now, in your format, would you basically make it like it's going to be going on?
Yeah.
The, the proposition one, you know.
Well, what I'm gonna do is, I'm, I'm thinking right now that, uh, that'll be the actual ordinance language, and that's what I'm trying to, I mean, it's, it's, it's sort of tricky, because they need to see what we're changing, but it's also hard to see on some of these, uh, when, you know, when you read them with the changes, it's hard to read sometimes, too, so, um, so, you know, for example, I mean, if you all wanna keep that conflict of interest or just delete that change.
You don't must stand on it.
I don't want.
That's just me.
You wanna vote on it? Can we go on?
Well, one of these, we're not making final voting, just what, what are your feelings about? We got one no.
I like simplicity, so if there's already a law in place, I'd say go with that.
I don't know what you're asking, you talking as far as the.
Charter provision, yeah, yeah, where we keep the, the change, I may, uh, present that to the citizens, or, uh, leave it as it is.
What are you saying?
A lot, I was just thinking, you were, you were saying there had the state law conflict and everything, but the way it read, and I don't remember, I don't have it in front of me, but there was something else in there that we needed to address, and I can't remember exactly.
Looks like no elected official or employee of the city will enter into a contract with the city.
It was pretty finite in that one, right?
That's, that's further clear to the public, you know, otherwise, I'm gonna be deeply apologetically to Sam Malloway, because he and I had a barrier built, uh, mostly me, when he entered into a contract with the city, the public came to me, and that's one of the reasons I ran, because of his contract with the city, that eleven thousand five hundred dollars a year swimming pool upgrade. So, if y'all rescind that one or the other, I apologize, man.
That passed.
Because it, thank you, I appreciate it. I, I would rather not see that again, uh, one of us entering into a contract with the city.
I kinda agree with that. I'm agree with that.
And that's why I would like with that, I mean, specifically stated where you can.
Pretty clear. In the long.
I agree.
So what I'll do is, is basically, I mean, is I will have the, um, reason for the change, summarizing the change. I'm gonna follow, and gonna reduce some of the valid problems, some of the proposed language to make it look more like it would appear on our actual ordinance.
Okay.
Because that's what I'm gonna do, it's worse than some of those, right now, they're written out as much as possible, so y'all can see the changes.
Right.
And I want the voters, citizens, to be able to see those changes, so, I think, I think that really, that charter one is the most, it, it, the way it read, it's pretty, it's hard to read.
Right.
Uh, most other ones are not really a whole lot of changes to them.
Right.
And so, uh, I'll take, basically, I'm saying we'll explain the charter right in front of each one of those, and then I have the other official employees.
So there's twenty eight propositions, now there's twenty seven.
Yeah, I'll take it out, a couple of those, we're gonna, I'm gonna look at, uh, deleting them, uh, very, very small wording changes that I think just add another, um, what you're valid, that we probably don't have to have, but we just gonna look at a couple of those and see that if I can just blend those into the period wording changes, since there's a couple, so I think we might have twenty six, twenty five, we're gonna look at the other day. So, yeah, we could, uh, grab that on the first, and, uh, basically, we could look at adopting the, uh, uh, ordinance on the fifth, uh, August. Don't hit you down, try to make vacation the week, um, uh, I'll get out, most of that week before the first, that's gonna click. Through the fifth, it's gonna click, you know.
Oh, tomorrow, push that back a little.
Yeah.
Put the pressure on you, then, and we have those.
Well, it's, you know, it's, like I said, a lot of this is, I'm gonna have to, when we get the ordinance done, it's gonna, you know, obviously be very important, if that wording is exactly what we have to have, it's, uh, yeah, we might just look at it, maybe, uh, February, or fifth, or the twelfth, or something, I don't know if that's possible.
Oh, it's a hearing, so I could live on the, ten to see council tonight.
No, I don't think a public hearing, I thought we had a public hearing on the first.
Oh, okay.
But actually, this, I'm talking about, this will be in August.
Uh, uh.
We're talking, we're talking two different things, I'm talking about the actual passage of the ordinance, which will be gone the week before the fifth.
Okay, I get you.
That's what I'll be hard pressed, but, um, it, it'll be, I said, but that's, as long as we pass it forward, I think that's, and like I said, sometimes you don't wanna wait for the last day, 'cause if something happens, or, or, or we have a tornado, or some horrible thing like that, we can be, um, we're, that's our deadline. So anyway, um, yeah, we'll, we'll get that on the fifth, still, um, I'll do, if I can get it done before then. I'm gonna come back on the first, which is Thursday.
Okay, in the charter, we also had in proposition five, and I'm gonna clarify with this, Pat said the last time, we wanted to go from two to four years. And in doing so, we lose replacing somebody if something happens.
Correct.
We can't do anything for four years, or until the replacement of that person next election.
It's not, it's had called election replacement, that's.
Okay.
So one would be okay, one would probably be the election.
Yeah.
One would want to hold that. One we can live on, two we better.
Yeah, definitely.
That's it.
We did that, like we had others, and gentlemen, developed a debilitating condition for the last year, and so we took it out for the last five, ten months.
Right.
Instead of calling, especially to serve for four months, essentially five months.
And we're also looking at, um, no term limits, 'cause that's what we looked at as far as going with two years, we said.
No, I didn't change the term limits.
No?
Probably even.
That was changed back in, I think, eighty-four, maybe, twelve, they can restart twenty years.
I haven't changed that.
But does that need to be in the charter?
It's not because of the charter, isn't it?
It says no more than six consecutive terms, and you have to sit out for one year. Add a two-year term, but if you're gonna talk six, four-year term, that's.
Twenty-four years.
Yeah, that's how.
No, well, I don't know how, where you're looking at cities, I thought it said four years max.
Well, it says six terms, twelve year max, you have to sit out a year, you can sit out a year, and you can re-run it.
Okay, twelve years maximum.
Well, it's a massive.
Yes, they keep twelve years max, that'd be three, three terms.
Three terms, right.
I don't know about that. Somebody did four years, and I'm gonna phone straight up, or. Well, I don't know about that, sitting down, coming back, stuff after you served twelve, I think if you hit twelve, and if it's term here, and term here, and five years of term, and you're done, I think that's the ability to serve, period.
Yeah, you can sit out a year and run again.
Yeah, so in that effect, you're running, you're gonna be on the council for twenty-four years.
Well, if you stay or if you win, I mean, nothing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't like to be, I mean, with this term limit, I think that's it.
You like term limit?
Yeah. Anybody in the elected position too long?
I know.
Well, in a small community, this is the only kind of small people that you have a hard time.
I agree.
You have a hard time getting people to work, and if those people wanna serve, and they're still doing a good job, then you wanna keep them, if you don't, well, then someone has to step up and, and, and.
I agree with that.
That's the one thing I don't like about.
I believe it the way it is, except for the, we could change the, you know, the six terms to only three terms. Success.
Three, four, and six, two.
But I wouldn't change the rest of these, I, I, I think term limits serve some purpose, but at the end of the day, if you're off it for a year, run again, and the voter wants you again.
Well, that's not a term limit, is it, is there a different term to that?
Well, we got a name.
Oh, no, that, that term limit to me is finite, that's what you're.
Well, it is finite, you should have.
Continually, more than.
Right.
So make sure it work, I don't like being a front back person, but. I think once you do twelve, she's done.
You said back in.
I agree with it.
Okay.
I mean, if you serve total, though.
What, what, what encouraged them to do that?
Did something, I'm talking about, because, you know, people could, start on the council longer, if they want.
Oh, so they moved it back twelve years instead of?
It used to be two years.
Oh, it was?
It used to be you could run, you could start running council two times, and that was it.
So that was four years?
Yeah.
Maximum.
And you could never, you couldn't sit out and run again?
Set out and come back, and then they changed it to twelve.
Okay, so they extended it.
I thought that you had limited it for, and that was it.
By the same reason, if our suggestion, the no term limits, is just because of the fact you can't get people to do anything now.
Oh, no, that's, that's not, it's people jumping.
There's not many people in the volunteer pools, just.
The problem I have is sometimes the same people.
Well?
Okay, so, maybe it's twelve?
I said maybe twelve for sure. I would, if I was gonna have my first, I'd say twelve and done. But that's my, that's my vote.
So, what is the truth of it? I was looking to say there's, it does say six terms, I don't know if it says, I was hoping it said twelve years, but.
Well, if I say maximum twelve, it's six terms, maximum twelve years.
Yeah, but it still says, I don't have any working, it's.
I'll work from the orange to the center too.
Well, I, I know where you asked, I've got the revised charter, so I just had to fly it in front of my ear, but, uh, they need to check it. It was three, three times, that's what I'll change it.
Okay. Is there any other issues?
I agree with, but, I don't know, I kinda know what your logic is with our group, with what you're saying.
You don't want somebody sitting in the same location for three years.
Not with that, no.
It's not, it's not a good thing, sitting out a year, really not sitting out. It's my opinion.
Okay. We're good? All right. Moving along, here's the administrator, by lead report team.
Uh, let's see, we are, uh, we are paving, still paving between the hospital and Beef Master, the rain has been a constant setback. We can't, uh, complain about the rain, but it is setting us back. And, uh, from, from Beef Maswell, from that street, we'll be moving to Broad, and from there, uh, we'll be going from margin to sergeant on Second Street, yeah, so.
That's a bad one.
It is, it is.
Are you gonna move the manhole back down with the gun?
Uh, yes, we are, uh, there was a.
Yeah, they like.
They are, oh, the reason they did that before, before our new, uh, the former street supervisor, they raised them, uh, so they wouldn't be, uh, you wouldn't have water from the street pouring into the, into the drainage system, and, uh, that's not really how you do it, I don't, it was something they did a long time ago, so, uh, as we move into our, into our paving projects, we do lower those, those manhole covers, it looks like, I mean, really.
Like a graveyard, right?
Well.
Sit, sit in the middle, right?
Exactly, oh, yeah, yeah, or it'll be in the middle, I mean.
It's not.
Yeah.
As long as you're low on the thought, yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna understand you're gonna go ahead and do Broad before you do Second?
That is correct.
So Broad is next?
Yes, well, we started looking at the, at the water line, and it's undefined, we don't, we're not really sure what's under the second. It could be metal, it could be poly, it could be, we don't know.
Well, okay, I was, I was under the impression that, or.
And in my head, I mean, I mean, I mean, uh, sorry, I thought you were gonna say poly was under there.
Nah, we don't.
Good to know you.
No, no, we don't, I, I've come back to, you know, some of our, our guys that have been around a long time, uh, Randy and, and Bill, they can't remember what's under there, so we gotta go and look and see, and see what we need to do there. That, that's why we're doing Broad and bias a couple more weeks there.
That's fine, maybe it's one big.
When you do the plan, I'm starting this, like, uh.
But we're, right after we're done.
Just all skin, skin, skin.
Yeah, we, we, we wanna keep moving forward, and, uh, so, uh, as soon as we can get done with that road in between that. Yeah, we, we wanna keep moving forward, and so, uh, as soon as we can get done with that road in between the, the hospital, it's just a popped Broad, and we'll go from, uh.
All the way to?
Yeah, to the duck pond, basically.
District or whatever that is.
That is, they determine, two ways about it, it is in bad shape.
Yeah.
There's only patches left, there's no personal left.
Right, it's, it's in horrible shape.
Yeah.
But the, the water lines are replaced under that, so this buys us time to work on Second Street, some memo jumps in, Largent to Sergeant, that area.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Be interesting to see what's under Second.
Yeah, yeah, I suspect it's a lot of steel line.
I suspect it probably is, but I thought it had been addressed, that's why I had them.
Yeah, no, no, we, we've been busy on this.
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, uh, let's see. Oh, we had some, we're, we're busy sending a lot of our, our water employees to, to classes, uh, we had two that went to school last week, uh, we have two that have gone to school this week. This week, they're doing fire hydrant training, uh, learn how to rebuild the fire hydrants, and just, we're having our fire hydrant plan, Ryan's gonna be working on, marking on, we already had a plan on working that and everything, we just gotta go through and make sure how, how it's working, if they're labeled correctly, and, uh, we need to have all this in place through our water department.
Are you going to have a schedule set up where these things are maintained and open and closed and everything on a certain schedule?
Yes, and I believe our, our department does this already.
Yeah, I thought so.
Uh, but I'm, I'm trying to get it, for Ryan, and we need to have that in, in our system, right, not just the volunteer part of it.
I was just gonna ask you, Art, how are we going about documenting or mapping for the future, what lines have been laid where, so that in seventy years, we're not going to watch here, remember what we've done on?
We have that already, uh.
How do we, how do they keep up with that?
Corey, Corey, he, he places that on a chart, we'll have valves, uh, fire hydrants, we have lines, uh, running through the street, and we identify, this is a six inch line, four inch, five inch, uh, and then we started looking at the map, is how I know, is we have some unidentified lines that, you know, no one's been out there to look at it in a while.
Yeah.
So.
I knew it was being done, I just was curious how we.
Right, right, uh, we have a, we have done a PDF and a Google Word, uh, and basically, anytime they make a change, the water department, they come back to Corey, he reports the change, so if they move them, or, you know, uh, like, for instance, all the, uh, all the taps on each street, uh, most of them are three quarter inch, we had one or two that was a two inch line, so he's able to identify all those taps, all those meters, so. Uh, let's see. Okay, oh, uh, Ryan Kinnick, he passed his, his B water license test, so he is now a service water, B license holder, so, and B license, uh, service water is the minimum requirement you have to have in order to run the water plant. So now we have Randy, who is a B license holder, and Ryan, and Randy, of course, working part-time, you know, because we needed to work up his license, so.
So now that Ryan was B licensed, when is Randy gonna fall off part-time?
Uh, well.
Is it gonna be Ryan that steps in for part-time?
Ryan is, is already doing a lot of the water plant, uh, there are some things that, Randy has a lot of knowledge.
Of course.
I mean, there's no doubt, and so we've been utilizing him a lot, uh, we just didn't want, you know, something to happen, and him moving to Charleston City or something, and here I said without B license.
Well, yeah, no, I, I understand why you didn't, I was just wondering, was timeline, there's no transitioning completely?
Well, transition, well, it's in process, and it's, it's Ryan.
It says Ryan is more comfortable than.
Exactly, we don't have a.
Yeah, you will.
Per se.
Yeah, Ryan's been training and helping, right, along.
Right.
He's done already a tremendous job, like the other day, y'all had a meeting on the water line, maveling and everything, but Ryan has not been in on any of these discussions, so Ryan, you stepped in to help.
Right about that, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, but as we go, Ryan will be.
Yes.
Right.
More part of it, so he'll be getting that knowledge.
Right, I mean, this, this process, I think, a year, two.
It's gonna be a lot to work.
It is, it is, it's not something you just, you know, you know, your brother's.
Yeah, fair amount of same way, it's a while to get there.
Yep.
He handled the tornado crisis really well, all by himself, so that's great.
So. Uh, so, uh, let's see, speaking of water, uh, nineteenth June, the, our insurance company for the, the stand pipe, uh, the engineers, the insurance company's engineers will be here on the nineteenth, uh, to look at our, our damage, and, uh, they wanted to verify, because they, they now know that we think, our engineers also think, that we need a whole new stand pipe. So they, they've sent this, uh, they're gonna be sending this, this engineer to review the damage, and we'll know more after they put in their report, so.
So it's my understanding that Jet Stand Pipe actually moved on the foundation?
That's, that's why our engineers.
That's why we're gonna need a new.
Yeah, uh, it, it took a year, for sure, so. Uh, our, our fast grant application for the, for our department, and it's all been submitted, uh, we worked pretty hard and diligently on that the other last week or so before the application was, was to be in, we submitted for two vehicles, uh, it might come down, if we just get one, but, uh, we're going for a, an emergency, uh, response vehicle that can carry our jaws of life, and we're calling it a, a fast response vehicle, that, it's more like a three quarter ton shaped pickup with a bed and everything on it, that could actually get to the scene a little quicker than one of our bigger vehicles, and, uh, it may look a lot like a brush truck, but it's not gonna be all the brush trucks, so, uh, but I, in talking to the grant administrator, he said out of the fifty communities he submitted for, through, through him, uh, we were probably number two best likely to get a quality, so, and, uh, so we have high hopes that, that something will at least come out of this, and, um, let's see. Oh, we covered the used baskets for the Biscop project. Oh, we're, we're working through the rain as much as we can, we're, we're still working at the park for sand volleyball and the washer pits, the washer pits were basically completed, uh, we just need to build the boxes, put the cam in the box, and it'll pretty much be done. Uh, then all we gotta do is throw some sand in the volleyball court, put some poles up, and we'll basically be done, and, uh, so we're, we should be all finished by the end of this.
We got sand out there, don't you?
We did for the washer pit, uh, we still need some sand for the volleyball, but it's nothing we can't haul in and then down.
Well, Ryan had to have.
Right.
And that regardless.
All right, so that, that should be wrapped up, uh, depending on the rain this week, so another project down. Uh, the tornado relief fund, uh, I haven't looked to see how much we have recently.
Now, we got any new donations since, I guess it was the weekend before last meeting, when we got that five or eight thousand extra that weekend.
Right.
And we dispersed. Four thousand.
Sixty-five dollars.
Sixty-five dollars, yeah.
And I have another four thousand two hundred to come tomorrow.
Before.
You have to be in, in a total of twenty?
You want that?
If he gets another four, that should.
No, no, I'm.
No, he's looking to disperse.
Oh, it's a curse.
Yeah, got it, got it.
Yeah, there, there was a house up in Country Club that was, the roof needed to be replaced, and it was about forty, forty some odd square or so, it was, it was pretty big, and, uh.
The Country Club?
Yes.
Don't they have insurance?
No, no, it wasn't the Country Club, it was a house near the.
Oh, near the.
Yeah, uh, it was, and, uh, she had no insurance on her house, and.
So that's how the money will be dispersed, based on whether you have insurance or not, or any?
Well, not, not so much, it's, it's more just need.
Yeah, the committee will decide how the money is distributed.
Right.
There's a committee for the GoFundMe account that either Jason, or I, or Tommy are on, um, and they will get together and decide how the money is allocated.
But, uh, so, but we aren't looking at, at people without insurance first, because.
Yeah, we're kinda making ones that need it the most, that need help the most.
I know maybe some people that have had damage that don't need any monetary help, or one monetary help, so we'll have to go through the list and.
Right.
See.
All right. Uh, let's see, but it's ongoing, so, uh, we're gonna have T M L Health Insurance coming in on the eighteenth of June, uh, to talk about what changes, now, we've gone back and forth on, on health insurance, we're, basically, we're trying to look at everything that's available, to figure out what's best for our employees, and T M L wants to come address some of their options, now currently, we're with T M L, currently.
Well, they're at your shop, and they wanna come.
Basically.
Now, they, now they wanna.
Basically, yeah, yeah, they, they know we're shopping, so now they wanna come tell us what their best deals are, but, yeah, instead of doing that years ago, you know.
Like cable companies.
Yeah, basically, and, uh, so, uh, but because.
We, we do, we do it all the time, we.
Right.
We basically figure out what, what do we wanna lower our premiums, and.
Right.
Do that anytime.
Right, so that's what we're doing, and, and we don't care who it is, we just want the best deal for employees.
Well, we, will it not start until, you know, open enrollment is when, will it not, not be able to use it, utilize it until open enrollment?
If it's T M L, now, if you go into a new, so, if you own a Blue Cross National Shield, you know, it's open enrollment right there and there when you pick it up.
It is.
Right.
Not only certain types of the year.
Well, it's.
It's like, you know, kicking into a hundred one, I'm sure that's when our team will probably, probably.
Well, that's possible, but, I mean, it's impossible to be double covered, I mean, you know.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, if we.
We could have enough transition, that, that really transition is difficult.
Right.
T M L, the farce in October, when we go with another company, that was cut, that's open right there and there.
Right.
Now, we'll be doing it all. Four, four.
Yes, but, anyway, so, more than likely, because we won't, we don't want to be double, double covered.
Yeah.
That would cause huge complaints, you know.
We, we also don't want a lapse in between.
Oh, yeah, of course, that's why we're doing this now. But, uh, anyway, so, we'll be dealing with them, uh, see what they got on the eighteenth of June, which, uh. And, uh, oh, just a quick note, I didn't make it, we got our, our tablets in from the council, so Corey's gonna be setting them up, and, uh, we got how many?
Four.
Four.
One.
No. I do know.
I don't think Bob's name was on one of them. So, and, uh, anyway, so.
I mean, I'm all just. He's not straight up.
However, we start rolling these out, we can wait till the next council meeting, you know, to you, we could, you could come in and pick them up, that's where you get some setup.
They should be ready by the end of the week.
Okay.
I hope that mine got time, so.
Yeah.
Get, get. Yeah.
So, by the, by Friday, you think you have it all ready, so if y'all can come in Friday and pick up your, your tablets.
What do we choose to do it?
Uh, I know it was.
Service code?
Same kind of, we go ahead.
Easy face.
Yes.
Did it?
That's it.
All right, here request for features in and out of City Council, what else we need to handle, please? That is unacceptable. You what?
Message mine down.
Yeah.
Much in good hearing.
What would I, what would I have to ask, are we going to, um, publicize the public hearing, town hall meeting, hyper?
Yeah, we'll publicize it on the, in the paper, uh, as, as long as, as many years as much time as I can, you know.
Well, like I said, uh, we're gonna do that on July first.
Right, right, so.
Are, are you gonna just have, why don't you just post it, you know, City, Town Hall meeting is, you know, first, the council meeting, just say, Town Hall, public hearing, whatever you wanna call it.
Right.
Uh, we could just start it at five thirty, or five, you know, have it set then, general council meeting, have the meeting, just have your drive.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's forward, yeah, but we are, we are gonna put it in the paper and, uh, talk about it.
You wanna do the town hall after or before?
Before.
Yeah, well, it'll just be part of the meeting.
Okay.
And it's, it's on the general, I don't say.
Okay, okay.
It's just, it's just one of them, you all be here, so.
Well, what, what we're used to is having a hearing, and then closing the hearing, and then starting the city council meeting.
Yes, you can do that, but, but it's still a city council meeting, that's one thing, like I, I mentioned too, but if we meet, if this group meets, then it's a city council, so, so it's just basically either one of these, conduct town hall meeting on charter, and, so, uh, they conduct a public hearing, whatever you wanna say, either way.
But because we're all here, we got to do that.
Close the public hearing, and then, and then you go on the next.
All right, much in good hearing. All papers stay out.